The City of Manassia is pleased to present video recordings of city council and city committee meetings. Manassia residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website. Expression of opinions regarding City of Manassia issues or about these broadcasts can be made by contacting the mayor's office (920-967-3608), contacting their city alderman. Contact information appears on the city website. Or by completing the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.
Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manassia Common Council to order at 6:03. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And next, Clerk Newman, if you could do the roll call, please.
Alderman Marshall.
Here.
Alderman Grady.
Here.
Alderman Rappella.
Here.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Isenak.
Here.
Alderman Stevnik.
Here.
Alderman Perkins.
Here.
Alderman Lewis.
Here.
All are present.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to Item D, which is Public Hearings. And our first one is rezoning ordinance O-6-24. So if anybody in the gallery wishes to speak at this time on that, you may do so. Hi. Last chance. Asking again. All right. We'll move on to the second one, which is a special use permit by JDR Automotive. Is there anyone that wishes in the gallery to speak on Public Hearing, Item Number Two? Do you want to say a few words?
First of all, thank you.
Can you?
Yeah. State your name and address.
Am I on now?
Yep.
Okay. I'm David Seil. I own JDR Automotive. And I'd like to put a used car lot down there. I gave each one a used one of these beforehand, and I understand the concern of that building because it was eyesore for many years. But I bought the building. We painted it last weekend. We're going to put new gutters and everything on it. The landscaping wasn't an issue, so if you look at this, we planted arbor vadas in the back, 13 on one side, 10 on the other side, which would also be like a fenced area garbage if we don't put up a fence, or we can put up a fence, that's fine. And then in front of the building, you'll see where the entrance is. There's, we're going to take out some blacktop there. We haven't done it yet. And we'll put a couple of trees and bushes there. And then in the front of the, on Appleton Road, the dots are where we planted some bushes and the round circles are where we put trees already. And then there's a couple of trees down on the side. And then as far as, I think it was on part of the last one, there was equipment being stored down there. Everything's cleaned up. Like it says, we're cleaning everything up. I also own the corner on Ninth and Forty-Seven, which Fox Crossing was very happy because they got rid of two of the ugliest properties they had. The old Anderson resale buildings. I mean, they were very, I cleaned that property all up. I've owned City Limits for 25 years, and I think I keep that pretty clean. So I guess that's where I'm looking forward. I'd like to continue on with business. We'll probably have 30 used cars there. As far as the sign, there was a concern, but we probably spent $15,000 between the sign and cameras. And the cops like it because the camera shoots on the parking. Anybody have any questions?
You can't do Q and A, but I do appreciate you speaking to the council.
Okay. That's all I got to say, I guess.
All right. Thank you. Would anyone else wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to E, which is Report of Department Officers, Department Heads, Staff, and Consultants. Is there a motion? Alderman Stevnik.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like for us to receive minutes A through H and Communications I, J, and K.
Is there, all right. Motion was made by Alderman Stevnik, seconded by Alderman Grady. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it passes. Next is Item F, which is Public Comment on Any Matter or of Concern to the City. You have five minutes. I just asked that you state your first and last name. And as a reminder, this is not Q and A.
Christopher Evansen, 523 Broad Street. I just wanted to give the council an update on the condition of the Racine Street Bridge from somebody who lives two properties down from the bridge. To their credit, whatever they've done has limited the noise from this bridge with smaller vehicles, but the larger vehicles are still causing clunk every time they go over, whether it's an ambulance, school bus, fire truck. The other thing that is occurring now is that the bridge is becoming nonoperational for significant lengths of time. Yesterday, it was out of service for an hour, and it was out of service multiple times yesterday, today as well, I believe, and most days when we're out there. I would urge you to check with the people who are the bridge tenders, check with the police department because they are called in on occasion to block off traffic so that people know this bridge is not operational. It's especially problematic, yesterday there was a car towing a trailer on that bridge. If you're in a, if you're in a car, you can actually maneuver and exit the bridge because it's still two lane plus the bike lanes. But if you have a semi, if you have something with a trailer, they actually had to back this trailer. I have trouble doing it, and I'm pretty good with a trailer, but they had to back it off of the bridge. So there's, the one other thing is that we've now developed a clunk when the bridge opens. So about a quarter of the way up, a third of the way up, there's a loud clunk, just similar to what happens when a large vehicle crosses the places where the bascule portions meet. So that's new, and it doesn't sound good. So I just want to give you that report. We live very close. I know it's not a problem for a lot of the rest of the city, but it's a problem for us. It's a problem for Headwaters, and you should just be aware of it. That's my report.
Thank you, sir. I will add that this topic will be discussed to some depth during the Board of Public Works. There's a discussion, or there's an action item for Taco Street Bridge, and I think Director Youngworth will give some reports. I can tell you they've been working tirelessly to look into all that's going on with that with the Racine Street Bridge. Is there anyone else that would like to speak during the public comment?
Crystal Laux, 388 Nassau Street. I'm also Winnebago County Supervisor of District Two. So earlier today, I was discussing, I was having a chat with some people that are in the Winnebago County government, and I brought up the constitutional amendments that are on the ballot on August 13th. One of these amendments I'm very worried about for local governments, and I just want to make you aware of what that one is. So I'm just going to read what's actually going to be on the ballot. Allocation of federal monies. Shall Section 35.2 of Article Four of the Constitution be created to prohibit the governor from allocating any federal monies the governor accepts on behalf of the state without the approval of the legislature by joint resolution or as provided by legislative rule? What this means is, if Manassia had an emergency and it was declared a national emergency and we got funding from the federal government, the governor could not approve it. It could not get here that fast. The legislature would have to meet and approve the funding that is supposed to be coming to Manassia. That delays everything. And let me tell you, Winnebago County does not have the money and resources to float Manassia either. Local governments do not have the funding and the resources. If a tornado came through and ripped up Manassia, we have to vote no on these constitutional changes to the Constitution. And people don't even know that they're voting on it on August 13th. This is going to be a real problem. So yeah, I guess the thing is, I just wanted to make you aware that this is happening on August 13th, and people aren't even going to show up on August 13th because it's just a priory. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else in the gallery wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to G, which is the Consent Agenda. Is there a motion to take these together or individually? Alderman Stevnik?
I'll take them together. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the special joint common council meeting that we had with the Water and Light Commission on 6/17, and also our regular common council meeting of 6/17.
All right. Motion was made by Alderman Stevnik, seconded by Alderman Grady. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it passes. Next is the NINA-Mannassia Fire Joint Finance and Personnel Committee items. So Item Three, is there a motion? Alderman Stevnik?
The NINA-Mannassia Fire Joint Personnel Committee met last week, and we approved the share breakdown between the City of NINA and Manassia. That breakdown is for NINA 60.37% and the City of Manassia 39.63%.
Motion was made by Alderman Stevnik, and I believe seconded by Alderman Grady. Is there any discussion? Director Sassen?
I actually do see an error here. The percentages that are referenced are last year's percentages. It would be 38.88% for Manassia and 61.12% for NINA.
Say those, say those again.
38.88% for Manassia and 61.12% for NINA.
I actually don't recall that being those numbers.
I do.
Alderman Grady?
I do because I know Manassia's share went down .75%. Maybe take .75 from the 39.63, that's where Jennifer's 38.88 comes from.
So I didn't notice the discrepancy in the agenda, but those are the percentages for the 2025 budget.
You have those, Clerk. Want to change those for the friendly amendment? I think it's fine. We don't need to come in.
Before we go to Chief, if he has anything to say, Alderman Nichols, I see you have your light on.
Yes, I was just looking at the minutes from the Joint Finance and Personnel Committee, and the numbers that are on our agenda are the numbers also in the minutes from the committee. So I was just scanning through to see the, find the memo as well.
Chief, would you be able to elaborate on this a little further for us, please?
Yes, of course.
Alderman Nichols, I apologize. Were you still talking?
Not at the moment.
Okay. Okay.
Pass the memo onto that actual spreadsheet where the numbers are worked out, I believe. On those numbers, it's page, there's no page number listed, but that's where the 61.12% and the 38.89%, I believe that's where Director Sassen is getting her, the numbers from. So when we did the math, it looks like it should be 61.12 and 38.89, and it was just never changed on memos, probably from last year.
Are you saying they're on the second seven minutes?
Seven minutes.
I see what, when I made, when they made the motion in my committee, it was the numbers that are in the minutes. I realize that, but I'm looking at her minutes, and I recall this split. That's what the numbers were. So I don't know if we have to go back or what, but those were the numbers in my committee. If you're on the council page two. Yep. You click on number three. The formula there, it'll bring you down. You mean page two? I mean three? Sorry. Yeah, it'll bring you down to page 33. Yep. Scroll down higher, and page 34 has the 38.88 and 61.12. I don't disagree, but I'm telling you during that meeting, these were the numbers we voted on, not the ones you're listing now. So we have new numbers. The minutes are incorrect. Okay. I don't, whatever.
So.
Is it okay that, Clerk, are you able to change that up there? Okay, let's change those.
So Alderman Stevnik, are you offering a friendly amendment?
Yes.
And then Alderman Grady, do you accept that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you both. Is there any further discussions? Alderman Stevnik, I still see you have your mic on. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. Just a point of clarification. I understand what we're doing. Before the folks listening, if I may ask the city attorney, is the motion germane? We can change on the floor what's represented on our agenda and in the minutes? Yes. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
All right. Next is Item Four, under NINA-Mannassia Fire Joint Finance and Personnel Committee. Is there a motion? Alderman Stevnik?
Again, we met last week. I know this number's correct for sure. So we, we need to purchase and enter into a contract for the 2027, and this is how long it takes us, by the way, to get these vehicles, heavy rescue vehicle from Pierce Manufacturing and related equipment that the cost should not exceed $800,000, and to authorize the finance director of Manassia and NINA to review financing options to approve the most advantageous financial option for both cities, and we have each city attorney approve a contract before it is signed that includes its pending budget approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Motion was made by Alderman Stevnik, seconded by Alderman Grady. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Alderman Stevnik?
So this is a first. We've never, in fact, Alderman Pownell from NINA had concerns about this language because before we, we're kind of putting it yet, although we're approving, saying not to exceed $800,000, we're still giving our finance personnel the option of still working out this agreement and then getting it finalized by both city attorneys. So, and actually, I thought it was just the one city attorney because it's NINA, so. But I would like it if you looked at it too, for sure. That's it.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please. Next is Item Five, under NINA-Mannassia Fire Joint Finance and Personnel Committee. Is there a motion? Alderman Stevnik?
At this time, we're looking to purchase a 2025 Chevy Silverado. This is related fire equipment for the cost not to exceed $75,000, impending budget approval of the 2025 CIP budget by both cities.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion was made by Alderman Stevnik, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Alderman Stevnik?
If I could, I'd ask for your unanimous consent to hear from the chief to explain this again is a little different. We don't usually do it this way, and the, where we're purchasing it, they are working with us, so because it's not in the 2024 budget, the CIP budget, it would be in the 2025 CIP budget. So Chief, do you want to?
Yeah, like, thank, thank you, Mayor. It's, it's just us trying to get ahead of the game. Like everything else, vehicles are hard to get. We're working with a local dealership here that'll guarantee us matching state pricing to go ahead and get this locked down. They've said they would hold us, they would hold 2024 pricing for us, understanding that it probably would be like in January of '25 when we would give them the okay to, to go ahead and pay for it.
And do you want to explain also the reason we're getting this particular vehicle to help us out with?
Yeah, so we're replacing what would be two medium-duty rescue trucks with a heavy-duty rescue truck and this pickup truck. Without the pickup truck, we're kind of down a vehicle to be towing the boats around, our ice boat in the winter and the boat here for the summer. So that's what we looked at doing, was replacing our medium-duty rescues with one heavy-duty rescue, realizing we don't have a vehicle to pull the boat then. This vehicle takes the place of one of the medium duties to pull it.
Also, too, it's, this isn't just the cost of the vehicle, it's all the other equipment that's attached to it.
That's correct. The vehicle itself is quoted right now at $52,195, and the rest of the funds is for lights, sirens, a cap, SCBA bottle to put in there, the radio system that goes in an emergency vehicle, those kind of things.
Thank you, Chief.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Try, man, I'm so sorry.
Next is Item Six, Personnel Committee. Is there a motion? Alderman Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to have the council approve the recommended motion for the posting of the city clerk position internally and externally, and that the committee consists of the Personnel Committee Chair, the Personnel Committee Vice Chair, the Council President, and the mayor to be part of the interview process, and they will bring back a recommendation to the full common council.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Alderman Grady, seconded by Alderman Nichols. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Next is Item Seven, under the Plan Commission. Is there a motion? Alderman Isenak?
Thank you, Mayor. I would actually like to make an amendment, do I make the motion first? Okay, then I would like to make a motion for the special use permit. I apologize. I'll start over. Staff recommends approval of the special use permit to allow for automobile sales and repairs as presented for JDR Automotive located at 1285 Appleton Road, parcel number 6-01263-03, with the following conditions. All vehicles stored outside must be in working condition. Additional landscaping to be installed to conform to the required landscaping per Section 13-1-12 G2, and a site improvement agreement to be recorded with the City of Manassia. Outdoor storage of materials must apply for a special use permit and will require screening. Any dumpster and closers must be screened, and the current pole sign to be removed no later than December 31st, 2024.
I'll second.
All right. Motion was made by Alderman Isenak, seconded by Alderman Stevnik. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Alderman Isenak?
I would like to make an amendment to the motion, please, and take off the current pole sign to be removed no later than December 31st, 2024.
All right. Motion for the amendment to remove the part about removing the pole sign by December 31st, 2024, and seconded by Alderman Stevnik, sorry. Is there any discussion on the amendment?
I would like to discuss why I'm.
Yes.
Sorry. First time doing it.
That's good.
So the reason I'm asking to strike this is, the gentleman had spoke before about all the stuff that he has done on his property here. And when I was in the Plan Commission meeting, I noticed that his current pole sign that he has, he put a lot of money into fixing it and repairing it, which was allowed in that ordinance, and I don't feel that he should have to take that sign down. So that's the reason why I'm offering that amendment. Thank you.
All right. Alderman Stevnik?
This is a perfect example of government overreach when it's not required by, by us in our ordinances, and then individuals on a committee decide this is what they like. And so I agree with Alderman Isenak that we shouldn't burden this business, and if you had an opportunity to look at it, what a great improvement you've made out there. It's made the Highway 47 corridor much nicer, and to add an additional burden like this because some people don't like pole signs, if you go down Highway 47 or College Avenue or Commercial Street or wherever, nearly every business has a pole sign. And if it weren't necessarily on Highway 47, Appleton Road, okay, it's not really in a neighborhood. I understand that. For instance, the Quick Trip on Ninth Street, that's pretty much a neighborhood area. That's why you want to have a monument-type sign and not a big pole sign. So I agree with Alderman Isenak. I think this is a burden to this business, and I will vote for this amendment.
Is there any other discussion on the amendment? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. My question is for either the city attorney or Director Schrader, and that is clarification on the sign ordinance as it relates to pole signs.
Certainly. So our sign ordinance does not allow new pole signs. So any pole sign that is existing throughout the community is considered legal nonconforming. Basically, it doesn't, it's grandfathered. It's legal. It can stay. It can be maintained. It can be, the panels can be replaced, that sort of thing, but it is, it's grandfathered. So anytime somebody is applying for a new sign permit or a new business, they would have to have different types of signage, such as a monument-style signage. However, our, our policy in our ordinance basically states, we do not require sign permits for the replacement of panels. So if you have an existing sign, whether it be a monument sign, a highway sign, a pole sign, if you're just replacing that panel one for one, you do not require a permit. So as Alderman Isenak had noted, this, this gentleman did replace the, the panels within that pole sign prior to coming through this special use permit process. So that money was already invested, and it was legally done because it is basically allowed without a permit and can be maintained and replaced.
So in summary, by removing this requirement, the site still complies with current ordinance? By removing the requirement for the pole sign to be removed?
The pole sign would still be considered legal nonconforming, so.
Legal.
You're, the way you worded the question, no, it's not conforming to our ordinance, but yes, it is legal.
Thank you.
And if I may just add, so this, this was, did have a lot of discussion at the, at the Plan Commission level, and we, the overall Plan Commission was looking at it from a consistency standpoint of past businesses and past projects that have come up.
Thank you for that.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote for the amendment, please. Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote for the amendment, please.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I don't know why it's. Try that. Let's do that. Oh. Yeah. 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 Let's do a voice vote, I apologize. Alderman Lu, Alderman Marshall. Alderman Grady.
Aye.
Alderman Repella.
Aye.
Alderman Nichols.
Aye.
Alderman Eisenach.
Aye.
Alderman Sevigny.
Aye.
Alderman Perkins.
Aye.
Alderman Lewis.
Aye.
Amendment carries.
All right, so now we move back to general discussion on this item as amended. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, if we're able to do a roll call, otherwise we'll do a voice vote.
Motion carries as amended, eight zero.
All right, next would be item H, but there isn't anything, so we'll move on to item I, section I, which is action items versus accounts payable. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. Move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of June 14th through June 27th, 2024, in the amount of $1,287,821.25.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Alderman Nichols, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we can have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
All right, next is item two, which is a Class B beer and Class B liquor license application. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Move to approve the Class B beer and Class B liquor license application for the Nicolay Building Association, John Custer, the agent at 746 Third Street, Manasha, for the period of July 2nd, 2024 through June 30th, 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Alderman Nichols, seconded by Alderman Eisenach. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we can have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Next is item three, application for temporary Class B, Class B Retailer's License Brews on Bagel. Is there a motion? Alderman Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make the motion to accept the application for a contemporary Class B slash Class B Retailer's License Brews on Bagel for July 11th, 2024, from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM at Jefferson Park, Manasha Roadory.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Alderman Grady, seconded by Alderman Marshall. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we can have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
All right, next, we move on to K, ordinances of resolutions. Is there a motion for ordinance 6-24? Alderman Eisenach?
Thank you, Mayor. Staff in the Plan Commission recommend to the common council to approve the rezoning as presented for parcel number 4-00030-00 and parcel number 4-00031-00 from C1 General Commercial to R1 Single Family Residential.
Is there a second? Motion was made by Alderman Eisenach, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Is there any discussion? Director Schrader, would you like to say a few words on this?
Sure. So basically, this is a single-family house in a vacant lot, so an existing residential property. Unfortunately, there are some of these properties scattered throughout the community. It was zoned C1 General Commercial, and they would basically like to rezone that to single-family. So we're taking a legal nonconforming use within a commercial property, and we are actually making that conforming. There was some additional discussion at the Plan Commission level because this, there were several homes within this, this corridor that met this, met this same criteria where there was legal nonconforming single-family houses on a commercial lot. The Plan Commission did direct staff to bring back that discussion in possibility, looking at doing a proactive rezoning on those remaining five or six lots. So at the next Plan Commission meeting next Tuesday, we will be having that discussion, followed by most likely an actual public hearing process to bring back those remaining parcels. It does not affect this today, but again, just trying to clean up the zoning within the community.
Thank you. Alderman Repella?
Come here. Sam, I just want to let you know that, that, how did it end up getting zoned, general commercial? I know it was a tax, they used to do taxes out of that house. Is that what made it general commercial?
No, I don't, I don't believe so, just based upon several homes in this area being zoned commercial. There are, you know, some, some mix of residential and commercial throughout there, so I think just over time, for some reason, they were zoned commercial. And again, I'm not sure if that was historically done for potential growth of those commercial businesses, or why the intent was there, but basically because they are single-family, this is, this is a good rezoning to, again, clean up the community.
Okay, and that house has owned that extra lot forever, and then now they put a fence around that extra lot, but 30 years ago, it was just an empty lot. Thank you, Sam.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, if we can have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. Next is N, which would be public comments on any matter listed on this agenda. You have five minutes, just please state your first and last name and your address. All right, does anyone wish to speak? All right, as it's not looking to be so, we'll move on to O, which is items for next meeting agenda. This will be by majority vote. Is there anything anyone wishes to suggest? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to P for adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Alderman Eisenach, seconded by Alderman Perkins. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned at 6:40. Thank you, folks.
The city of Manasha is pleased to present video recordings of city council and city committee meetings. Manasha residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website, www-manashawy.gov. Expression of opinions regarding city of Manasha issues or about these broadcasts can be made by contacting the mayor's office, 920-967-3608, contacting their city alderman. Contact information appears on the city website, or by completing the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.